By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Conshohocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Mayor of Council. O divine master, in deep... Stand, please. In deep humility, we place ourselves, our thoughts, our plans in thy hands. We beg thee to fill our minds and our wills with the gifts of wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge, and piety. Help us not to think of self or personal desires, but rather consider the responsibilities laid upon us. Help us to remote as far as possible the welfare of our people and to treat them with impartiality and justice. Grant us this power to set a good example in thought, word, deed, so that thy blessings will be showered upon us and the people we represent. Amen. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the council did have an executive session this evening for personnel and legal matters?
I'm going to do roll call. Roll call. Councilmember Totino?
Present.
Councilmember Griffin?
Here.
Councilmember Sokolowski?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Stokely?
Here.
Vice President Flanagan?
Here.
President Leonard?
Present.
Mayor Aronson?
Here.
Thank you.
Welcome. I do have one other announcement, very quickly. Last month, Stephanie attended the Delaware Valley Trust Annual Conference. Divot asked her to consider writing a testimonial for the conference on membership advantages. Upon receipt of this, Divot then contacted Stephanie and asked if she would give a brief explanation and share the testimonial personally during the conference session. In one year, the borough went from not being a viable candidate for the trust to being asked to provide personal testimony at the annual conference in front of all the trustees and participating municipal members. My fellow elected officials and I would like to take a moment to acknowledge Stephanie's hard work and thank you for making council's goal of admission into the Delaware Valley Trust Authority a reality. So, thank you, Stephanie. The first item on the agenda is presentation of the police officer commendations and proclamations. Officer... George Metz?
Chief Metz and Mayor Aronson will now appear on the podium to honor our two officers.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to present lifesaving awards to these two gentlemen tonight. And before I do, I want to tell you something about them. Officer Perez, Xavier Perez, he's been with us about five years. He came from the Philadelphia Police Department where he did five years in one of the toughest districts down there. And it amazes me, his attitude in general and his commitment to the people around him. No cynicism at all. He's just a great guy to be around. Prior to being in the police department, he's an Army veteran and served in Iraq War. Officer Joe Glasgow, he comes from a background in law enforcement. He came to us from East Brandywine Police Department. He has extensive experience as a probation officer, as a correctional officer in the state system. He's a 22-year Navy veteran, Navy Reserves, and was also deployed to the Middle East. These are our guys, right here. And routinely, we respond to medical emergencies. It happens every day. And they really are usually non-emergencies. They're kind of routine in nature. But not until July 4th. On July 4th, the call. The call that stops everything came in. And they were working, along with their squadmates. An infant was in cardiac arrest. And when I tell you the focus that occurs at that moment, I wish I could, I'd need to be a poet to tell you about it. But I've lived it, and I know what they go through. Their focus: save a life. And that's what they did. They gave a two-month-old baby what the only thing that we all really have, and that's life. And their actions that day ensured life. It's such a win for that baby, the family, the department, the community, and them personally. And this job you carry around, such negativity. It lives with you. The longer you're here, the more negative baggage you carry, the more negative things you get. I'm so glad that because of their actions, they get to carry this positivity with them the rest of their lives and be an example to all of us. Thank you. The mayor will read your official proclamation.
Thank you, Chief Metz. Whereas on Thursday, July 4th, 2019, the Conshohocken Police Department responded to 300 West Elm Street for an infant not breathing. On arrival, Officer Joseph Glasgow and Officer Xavier Perez found a two-month-old in cardiac arrest. And whereas the responding officers quickly evaluated the victim, Officer Perez began CPR resuscitation on her. The officers reassessed the situation and determined that the victim had a blocked airway. Officer Glasgow took over airway clearing measures as he ran to awaiting medic. Upon arrival at the medic unit, it was determined the victim's airway had been cleared and her vital signs restored. And whereas, because of the decisive and professional lifesaving measures taken by the responding officers, the life of the child was saved. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Borough of Conshohocken, in recognition of the lifesaving efforts of Officer Xavier Perez and Officer Joseph Glasgow of the Conshohocken Police Department and their honorable service to our community, extends its appreciation, honors, and awards the citation of lifesaving to Officer Joseph Glasgow and Officer Xavier
Let's do it again.
If we could also have the families come up for a quick picture.
Come on! Oh, come on! Go get her.
Families, friends, fellow police officers, if you want to join in on the picture, they can get in here.
They're coming up.
That's okay, we've got other camera people. Yeah, come on in. We said, "Even." Come on, guys. Hey, we're doing fine. How are you?
Congratulations on that. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
25th. Small neighborhood, Algas. Good day, gentlemen. Good job, guys. All right. Great job. All right.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
The next item on the agenda is the Washington Fire Company update. Ms. Cheka?
Thank you, President Leonard. Good evening, everyone in the room, and thank you for coming to the Borough out for a public meeting. I'm going to start by saying thank you. Thank you to the Washington Fire Company, Conshohocken Fire Company Number Two, Narberth Ambulance, Conshohocken Police, our mutual aid partners, Montgomery County, and all emergency management personnel in the Borough of Conshohocken and surrounding municipalities that keep our community safe. It takes an extraordinary individual to decide to risk your own life for the lives of others. Honoring our officers a minute ago for their courageous actions really helps to put things into perspective. There is no question that those taking this risk are heroes to me, to council, and to the borough. Before getting into the current issues surrounding Washington Fire Company, I want to again ensure our residents, business owners, and visitors that protection of your health, safety, and welfare has remained the foremost priority throughout this process. Our fire chief has worked tirelessly to ensure that the safety of our borough has never been in question. The ladder truck previously dispatched from Washington Fire Company is currently being dispatched from Conshohocken Fire Company Number Two. Conshohocken Fire Company Number Two has literally opened its doors to volunteers of Washington Fire Company, allowing them full access to the fire company building and trucks. Members of Washington Fire Company continue to serve our community, with the only difference being the dispatch location. It has been simply wonderful to watch active volunteer firefighters, regardless of station affiliation, respond to emergency situations as one consolidated unit. The seamless protection is a testament to our emergency management personnel's leadership and the commitment of the volunteers from both fire companies. And you can rest assured that should an emergency arrive, volunteers from both fire companies, along with the borough's paid firefighters, will be there to protect you. There is no question regarding the knowledge, skills, training, and qualification of all our volunteers and paid firefighters. Our fire chief would be pleased to speak with you at any time regarding the caliber of emergency personnel protecting you. He would also be pleased to speak with you regarding the logistics of how emergency responses are currently being handled. In short, response is occurring from one centralized location, Conshohocken Fire Company Number Two. And quite frankly, it is functioning very well. To clear up any confusion on how we arrived at this point, I will provide a brief background. Over the last year and a half, Borough Administration, with the leadership of Borough Council, has step-by-step been working through a top-down analysis of Borough services and expenditures. Borough Administration itself is not immune from this analysis. This council has taken it upon itself to review the internal workings, which includes finances, of Borough Administration, more so than just a review of the yearly audit, which was just completed. This stringent of a review is unmatched by prior councils. Their involvement has been appreciated, welcomed, and has benefited the borough in a myriad of ways oftentimes unseen. Council and this administration have made a policy of only making decisions with full and complete information. Council is not singling out any one group and expects the same level of information and analysis across all Borough services and expenditures. For example, this council authorized a full and complete analysis of Borough roads and related infrastructure, and based on this review, is currently trying to strategically plan its road program for the next several years. Additionally, this council focused on our parks and recreation system and has obtained a full and complete analysis of improvements necessary to the community center, the Marywood Park House, and our other Borough parks. These are just a few examples. Fire services in the borough are not exempt from this analysis. When it comes to fire services in the borough, the borough provides an appropriation of $100,000 to each fire company. They provide radio equipment to each fire company through the Relief Association, and they provide fire trucks. As with other Borough appropriations, the borough is seeking full and complete information on the operation and financial status of both fire companies. In 2017, the borough conducted an agreed-upon procedures audit with respect to the borough's allocations to both fire companies for years ending 2015 and 16. An agreed-upon procedures audit is a targeted approach that involves testing only specific balances or transactions that in this case consisted of Borough appropriations. At that time, the borough's third-party auditor advised council that it was experiencing difficulty obtaining information necessary to complete the audit for Washington Fire Company. As a result, the borough did not provide additional public monies until the audit was complete. The audit for Washington Fire Company revealed some concerns regarding transactions in 2015 and 2016. There were transfers made out of the Borough Appropriations checking account into the Washington Fire Company's general checking account in amounts of $3,000 in 2015 and over $10,000 in 2016. There was no reconciliation or documentation to explain these transfers, which reflected an inability to account for 12.5% of the funds appropriated by the borough in fiscal year 2016. Obviously, that deficiency was a very serious concern, as were other accounting deficiencies identified in the audit. The audit report, including the deficiencies and recommendations for internal controls made therein, were provided to the management at Washington Fire Company. Since Washington Fire Company is a partner with the borough in providing fire services, the borough paid for this audit and provided a great level of assistance and support during the process. The borough also allowed the fire company two years to implement the recommendations in the report, releasing the appropriations for 2017 and 2018. In May of 2019, two years after issuance of the fiscal 2015-16 audit report, both fire companies were notified on May 28, 2019, that council would be discussing the approval of a financial audit of both fire companies at the June 5 public meeting. At that meeting, the audit was approved, with no comment offered by either fire company. Both fire companies were informed of the vote for an audit, and Conshohocken Fire Company Number Two immediately began cooperating with the borough's third-party auditor, granting full access to the necessary financial information. Unfortunately, and quite surprisingly, the Washington Fire Company chose not to cooperate. To date, no information has been provided by Washington Fire Company, notwithstanding the auditor's offer to provide onsite assistance as needed. More red flags were raised when we received an email dated July 2, 2019, by Washington Fire Company's treasurer, informing the borough's auditor that she had been directed by the fire company's board of directors not to provide any information beyond expenditures from Borough appropriations. Based on the irregularities of the prior audit and the lack of cooperation with the current audit from Washington Fire Company, the council was left with no choice but to take action to ensure the assets and well-being of the borough residents were secure, and therefore, Borough-owned fire trucks were removed. While we have yet to receive any financial data as of today, we did receive a letter from council for Washington Fire Company indicating that Washington Fire Company has begun the process of working to provide the information needed to perform the audit. For that, we thank him, and we hope that that cooperation continues. And based on our conversation, it sounds like it's going to, so thank you. One of the duties placed upon Borough Administration and elected officials is the taking of action reasonably necessary to protect Borough assets. That duty requires the making of hard decisions. Hard decisions that we don't always like to make. So regardless of the ultimate outcome of the audit, the borough has fully protected its assets in a manner that still allows volunteers of Washington Fire Company to continue their valiant service to the borough. At this time, the borough will be making no decisions regarding Washington Fire Company. Tonight, we look forward to hearing comments from council, from Washington Fire Company, from a representative from Washington Fire Company, and from the public. The information received tonight, information obtained from the completed audits of both fire companies, and information received from what we are sure to be several additional meetings on this topic, will be evaluated fully by this council, like everything else. Only after full and complete information is available can council make a decision regarding its future relationship with Washington Fire Company and the future of fire services for the Borough of Conshohocken. So I thank you for your time, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mandelbaum. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Stephanie. I was a little concerned that I was going to have to follow the police officers, and that's a tough act to follow.
It sure is. Especially this guy over here.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I represent the Washington... I have some prepared public remarks for you, and if you have questions or comments, I'm happy to do that. I've actually asked my members to refrain from the dog and pony show of coming up over and over and over to voice their sentiments. They'll have an opportunity to stand and to indicate exactly what their feelings are. Can you hear me? No? Okay. It's... I'm going to have to lean down into the mic here. But I represent the Washington Hose &amp; Steam Fire Engine Company Number One, Conshohocken. And I appear tonight to address the issues surrounding the closure of the fire company and to make it clear that my client's highest priority is to work together to resolve this matter so that Washes can reopen and return to serving the citizens of Conshohocken as quickly as possible. The borough's action on July 5, in seizing the fire company's vehicles and effectively putting the company out of service, surprised its citizens and stunned the fire company, which had no forewarning that such an action was anticipated or warranted when borough officials showed up at 7:00 a.m. that morning, only hours after Washes had volunteered its services for the benefit of the borough's annual Fourth of July Parade. Since that time, we have tried to ascertain the reasoning behind the borough's actions. And to date, here's what we've been told. Washes was closed because of concerns about the company's willingness to provide financial records for a comprehensive Borough audit of the organization. We recognize and fully respect the borough's right to review the financial operations of the fire company, and we want to be clear in our response. The fire company is fully prepared to cooperate with the audit, to provide the financial records sought by the borough for that purpose. Washes has nothing to hide, and we want to be as open and transparent as possible in working with you on this issue. Moreover, the fire company regrets that it did not effectively communicate its willingness to cooperate when the borough initially made its records request via a two-sentence email on May 29. My clients understand that the borough has an obligation to ensure that taxpayers' dollars are being spent as efficiently as possible, and we are prepared to work cooperatively with you towards that purpose. That said, we remain concerned about the rationale for the borough's decision to take such a drastic action based on what it perceived as Washes' failure to provide additional financial information. When the fire company received notice that the borough sought records for an audit, its leaders reasonably assumed that the request was similar to all those requests that it received in the past from the borough. Indeed, it should be pointed out that since the last audit of the fire company's finances, which Stephanie had discussed in her opening remarks for 2015 and 16, the borough must have been satisfied with the status of the financial review of the fire company's books because it continued to appropriate public monies to Washes. In fact, in the last year, the borough apportioned more money than the fire company requested. So when it received the current request for records in May 29, the fire company responded by stating that it would provide all records pertaining to the allocation of public funds, just as it had done in every previous year. It was not until after the vehicle seizure, and there was clarity on the subject, that the borough indicated that it had an interest in conducting a more comprehensive audit that requires additional financial records from the fire company. My clients have had a good-faith misunderstanding regarding the request for records and did not realize that the response had in any way created a problem for the borough. As you know, we've been in contact on several occasions with the borough's solicitor since this vehicle seizure, and we have made it clear that the fire company will provide all of the requested records in its possession. Moreover, its members have authorized me to represent to this body that the fire company will fully cooperate on other matters and issues which may pose concerns for the borough, all in the interest of working together to ensure that the citizens of Conshohocken receive the maximum level of fire protection possible. While acknowledging that the borough has a right to this information it seeks, we nevertheless believe that the borough's concern did not warrant the actions that it took, which effectively closed the fire company. On the contrary, we believe that the situation easily could have been resolved had the borough simply contacted the fire company to express its concerns. Had it done so, more than the May 29 two-sentence email, Washes would have cooperated with the request, just as it always has done. And we could have avoided the public theater that has ensued, which has damaged the fire company's longstanding reputation of honorable service to this community for over 146 years and publicly embarrassed its volunteer and auxiliary members. So... that requires additional financial records from the fire company. My clients have had a good-faith misunderstanding regarding the request for records and did not realize that the response had in any way created a problem for the Borough. As you know, we've been in contact on several occasions with the Borough's solicitor since this vehicle seizure, and we have made it clear that the fire company will provide all of the requested records in its possession. Moreover, its members have authorized me to represent to this body that the fire company will fully cooperate on other matters and issues which may pose concerns for the Borough, all in the interest of working together to ensure that the citizens of Conshohocken receive the maximum level of fire protection possible. While acknowledging that the Borough has a right to this information it seeks, we nevertheless believe that the Borough's concern did not warrant the actions that it took, which effectively closed the fire company. On the contrary, we believe that the situation easily could have been resolved had the Borough simply contacted the fire company to express its concerns. Had it done so, more than the May 29 two-sentence email, Washies would have cooperated with the request, just as it always has done. And we could have avoided the public theater that has ensued, which has damaged the fire company's longstanding reputation of honorable service to this community for over 146 years and publicly embarrassed its volunteer and auxiliary members. So our purposes tonight is twofold. First and foremost, we want to make clear that Washies stands ready to address the Borough's concerns so that we can immediately resolve this dispute and get the fire company reopened as quickly as possible. We do not believe it is in the community's best interest to keep Washies closed pending the completion of an audit that could take several months, all the while eroding the volunteer spirit of the fire company's members who may elect to not return to servicing their community. Accordingly, we are proposing a bold step that we believe serves the best interests of the community while also meeting council's stated concerns about the auditing of Washies' books. If the Borough believes that there are financial discrepancies of approximately $13,000, Washies is prepared to immediately address them, even going so far as to consider putting any reasonably disputed sums in escrow pending the completion of the audit. The money of the Borough would be protected. We believe that the safety of our community is that matters most in this dispute. And we further believe that Conshohocken is a safer place with Washies in operation than it is when it remains closed and its 75 members remain idle. Let's resolve the problem immediately so that Washies can return to service as soon as possible and no further damage is done to the fabric of the community. Secondly, I would ask on my client's behalf that all of us pledge to work cooperatively in the future, already indicating that the fire company's willingness to put aside its differences in the interest of resolving this matter. Our hope is that cooler heads will prevail so that we can move forward together in the service of our community. Service, after all, is exactly what we are all about and what the Borough is so desperately in interest of. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening.
Thank you very much. Mr. Peters?
Thank you very much. At this time, we have reserved on the agenda an opportunity for the public to provide comment. Based on the attendance in the room, as we have done in the past, we are instituting a two-minute time limit with one comment per commentator. When you step up to the podium, please provide your name and address. There is no need to make repeat comments should an individual prior to you share your sentiment. Believe me, Borough Council at this point understands the concerns. Mr. Mandelbaum's comments make clear that he is going to zealously advocate on behalf of his client. But at the same time, it is very important to this council that the public have an opportunity to provide all information that you believe is necessary for them to fully understand and evaluate this issue. Please keep in mind, I understand that emotions are high, but everyone's here to do the right thing. As Mr. Mandelbaum said, we're all here to serve the same goal. So please, keep your comments respectful. Again, to a two-minute time limit. It's not an opportunity for a question-and-answer session. This matter, to the extent it gets resolved, is going to be resolved through private respectful meetings between Washies and the Borough. Obviously, any official action on those matters will take place in a public meeting. But in order for us to fully work through the issues, Mr. Mandelbaum and I have already spoken about holding meetings in the near future. So with that, we will open it up to public comment. Please remain organized. Ms. Rogers will time the two-minute limit. If you are shut down, it's in no means an effort to be disrespectful. We simply have to move on. Thank you. And with that, is there any public comment?
My name's Andrew Carlin. I'm the President of Washington Fire Company. Been a resident for 51 years, 38 years in the fire service, 19 years as one of the chief officers of the Borough of Conshohocken, sworn fire official. Alan, I actually make the statement which we agree with, and we went over with the bodies, you can see the people here, to fix things. I want to fix things as the president, as a resident, I want to fix things. And if there was miscommunications from prior audits and stuff in the past, I apologize, and I apologize to my membership. 146 years, I want to keep it going. And I hope decisions that the company made and I brought out from the final decision doesn't hurt the Washington Fire Company or the Conshohocken Fire Department. You see our facility, we thought about this in 2007 about merging and stuff like that. I want the opportunity as a president to continue that for my children, you know, your children, your grandchildren, and all that, so. With that said, I appreciate the time tonight. I wish somebody would just came to me, but I can understand that. But like I said, I need...I want to prove that Washies want to make this work with the Borough and continue to service along with Conshohocken Number Two. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andrew.
Which name you want me to use?
Just his name, just his name. Just remind, name and address, please.
Joe Wertz, Street 35 West, Fifth Avenue, 60-year resident of Borough. The Washington Fire Company, as Andrew was saying, 146 years. My great-grandfather was a member of the Washies. My grandfather was a member of the Washies. My father was a member of the Washies. My destiny too was to be a member of the Washies, okay? I spent a lot of years, I was a lieutenant, I was an assistant chief, and I was deputy chief, all the way up. And all I can say is let them guys do what they do best, and that's fight fires. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Any other public comment at this time?
Hi, my name's Deborah Ellis, 149 West Fourth Avenue. I do not belong to Washies, but I've been a resident for 24 years. And I'm a little concerned about the fire truck, the ladder truck, because I was taking my morning walk, and there was a number-two fire truck down by the Millennial Building, and the ladder truck was from Plymouth. If we have to wait for Plymouth to send us a ladder truck, I don't think we're as safe as we are. That's all I have to say.
Jackie Cole, 810 Forest Street, Conshohocken, 42-year resident. Our local firefighters, they're a gem. They're an asset to our community. They are friends, our neighbors, they're the people that you pray to God come to your house if there's an emergency. They should have been treated with a little bit more respect. And at the house on July 5, when the trucks were taken, you have to think of them. They should have been able to clear their gear. They should have been able to help you get the trucks out. This shouldn't have happened in the morning without them knowing. You guys communicate everything to us. You're very transparent. You should have been a little bit more transparent with this. When you held the meeting on June 5 and decided to do an audit, you should have been a little bit more clear with what that audit would entail in the public meeting. Thank you.
Good evening. Anna DeSantis, 200 West Elm Street, at the Grand at Riverview condominiums, 30-year resident of Conshohocken. First of all, with regard to Washies, I was really disappointed when I heard that their engines and all their equipment was taken. And I'm really scared, and I don't feel safe. I like Washies right down the street from my condo. We have three four-story buildings down there. We need them there. The other thing, speaking of safety, every time I drive out here, I see people going through red lights. And I'm tired of seeing this, and I don't see anybody getting pulled over. They just keep blowing those red lights. When I pull out from the green...when I get the green, I'm afraid to pull out. I have to look both ways and make sure that I...it's safe for me to go through my green light. And the other thing I wanted to say was I submitted two citizen concern forms today. One was for the red lights, and now I can't remember what the other one was, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ashley Carlin, 300 Black on West 11. Bear with me, I'm not good at speaking in front of anybody. But I've always been really proud to be a country resident. I've lived here all my life, 24 years practically. I'm not a member of Washies, but I practically grew up there. And I'm just really disappointed. You guys just kind of blindsided everybody. There was no respect there. You just came in, took stuff, left really valuable equipment on the ground, and just acted like it was no big deal, like, oh, we should have read your mind. I just...it's just really disappointing. And I think as a Borough, especially as small as we are, we should be able to communicate. And I know it's a two-way street, obviously. But I just think it could have went a lot better without it being sneaky. It could have just went a lot better, that's all I have to say, really.
Thank you very much.
Charles King of Vera, Lancaster, Pennsylvania. I'm a 60-plus-year resident of Conshohocken, a 20-plus-year member of the Washington Fire Company. Sometimes you may think you're doing the right thing, but it's the manner in which you do it that makes the whole thing bad. And the manner in which you conducted the business and the application and the taking of these fire apparatus, whether you own it or not was not the question. It's the manner in which you did it. Sneaking into a building at 7:00 in the morning? Just not the way. You're supposed to be all mature adults up here. You've been voted to help forward the betterment of the Borough. That's just not the way to do it. Find a better way to go forward and get it done, get these people back on the street, and do it right. Thank you.
Clint Gates, I live at 926 Van Street apartment on Conshohocken, lifelong resident here. This is a great community I live in. But I have to be honest with you. I mean, I was disappointed when I found out on the news, July 5, that trucks were taken out of Washies. I live close to Conshohocken Number Two, that's all right and all, but whenever I walk through Conshohocken, I figure whenever I'm going to the store or whatever to run a few errands, I feel safe knowing that we have not one but two fire companies serving the Borough of Conshohocken. So all I have to say is, let's bring the fire trucks back to Washies where they belong.
Anyone else with public comment? Thank you all very much for coming out.
Hi, my name's Frank Carlin. I've been a resident over 60 years. I've been a member of Washies for 40, almost 50 years. And it's...they need them trucks down by those big office buildings. They need the fire truck. I seen a call go out a couple times where the fire truck, the ladder truck didn't make it. They called in Plymouth. If Plymouth has a working fire somewheres out in Norristown or something like that, it's going to be tragic. That's all. And I hope you can work stuff out.
Thank you, Mr. Carlin.
I think that's pretty much it. And I just wanted to give an opportunity to say two things. Number one, if I can just have the members of the Washie Fire Company that came out today just stand up so the council can understand where we're at. And the point that I want to make to everyone, both my members as well as the council, is that I'm pleased that my request that we refrain from any discussion or accusations that council did anything that was inappropriate personally or whatever. We understand that council has to make decisions that are informed. We would respectfully submit that we would like to be part of the information that you receive, and we think that perhaps that might make a difference. But I hope that it goes on record tonight as we move forward in discussing how we're going to resolve this matter, that it is noted that everyone has been respectful and that we have not allowed more theater to continue today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And personally for all of us in council, we would like to say that we really do respect all the members of all the fire companies and appreciate your coming out and working with us. So thank you all again for coming this evening.
Council President, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda.
The door's shut? Door's not shut yet. Door won't shut.
Yeah, it's not shut yet.
There's people coming in now. Steph got it. I don't care if they're out there, as long as the door's closed.
There are two items on the consent agenda. The first being to approve and adopt the June 5 and June 19 meeting minutes, and the second is to approve the June-ending Treasurers' Report and accounts payable in the amount of $496,693.25. I would need a motion if you are so inclined.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Um, favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries.
The next item under new business is to consider approving a fee waiver request for pitches for PKU. This is a previously approved event. It is for a great cause. They're asking for a fee waiver for the park. Mayor Aronson, I don't know if you want to add a few just that they contacted you in their invitation?
So they asked that. I personally invite all of you, Sarah and I, will be there to give the first pitch. So they're second year in Conshohocken at Suck Cliff Park, so it's really great that we can host them and that they're doing this for such a wonderful cause.
Date and time?
The...
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Date and time.
The date is September 7, 2019. The time I don't have, but I will get that for you.
10:00 a.m.
There we go. See? Between the two of us, we got it all covered.
There you go.
If you are...in order for them to start advertising for the event, it would be beneficial if you would make a motion tonight if you were inclined for the fee waiver request for pitches for PKU.
I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second.
Um, favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries.
The next item is to consider the resignation of a Dog Park Advisory Committee member. Ms. Caitlin Rosen is moving out of the Borough and can no longer serve on the committee. If her resignation is accepted, we'll advertise the vacancy.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Um, favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries.
The next item is to consider approving a Dog Park Advisory Committee roundtable discussion. The Chair of the Dog Park Advisory Committee has asked to host a meeting at the Community Center on August 20 at 6:30 p.m. The goals of the meeting are as follow: to provide residents information about the Dog Park Committee and meet members, a meet and greet, to discuss the needs of the dog owners in the Borough, to discuss the registration process and physical space of the Riverview Dog Park, and to solicit input for the potential future of Haynes-Salvati Park. The committee is looking for approval to host that type of a public meeting. Mayor Aronson, I'm not sure if there's anything else you want to add?
So this will be... So this will be happening at the next regularly scheduled Dog Park meeting, so it'll be Tuesday, August 20th at 6:30. But instead of meeting here, it'll be a meeting at the Community Center.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is to consider approving Resolution 201917, which would establish temporary stop signs at the intersection of Ryder Street and East 11th Avenue.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Last item under new business is to consider approving the scope of services and fee proposal for a borough parking evaluation for the Parking Task Force. This is specifically generated at the request of the Parking Task Force by the Borough Traffic Engineer from Panone, Brian Kivney. It has specific area of study. It's Fayette Street from East and West Elm Street to Fourth Avenue, two blocks east and west. It's basically an evaluation of our major, major trouble issue, problem areas in the borough in terms of parking. So the Parking Task Force has been meeting on a regular monthly basis. And one of the initiatives in order to move forward with generating a list of top ten parking issues and potential ways to solve those issues is to actually have an idea of where our problems actually are. So we have a lot of complaints about parking, and we need to decipher between where the problem areas are and what is just a perception of a parking problem. And so we think an actual analysis with data that will be provided by the Task Force to council while they're generating their list of potential solutions and, and opportunities is important. So again, like we stated earlier, every decision you make is based off of information and data. So this would be providing you that opportunity.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
What about the rest of the borough?
So the rest of the borough, we actually, and this is great about our residents, Rita Montemayor served on the Comprehensive Task Force. So she is thoroughly vetted in terms of the next ten years of goals and visions for the borough. She's now serving on the Parking Task Force. She is a go-getter, and she reached out to local universities, and she actually made contact with one of the deans at Temple, who has a student who is a resident in the borough of Concha Hocken. So we are meeting with him August, July, I think it's in July. And Rita, him and I are meeting in July, and what we're going to do is we're going to, it's an internship project, but they're actually going to base his entire thesis for his degree. He's going to do an, an parking study for the entire borough. And we're going to do a mutual relationship between the university and the borough. So that is what we are trying to work out. That is the thought at this point. So we will use the cost for the commercial area and our immediate need is a not-to-exceed of $5,500. And then this opportunity, which to Rita's credit, she gave, brought to the borough as an opportunity, which I think is fantastic. We would utilize our local resources in all the universities we have surrounding. And I know that the conversation also had maybe partnering with another university as well. So the larger scope study would be done by a college student for his or her degree, and the borough will get both. So I think it's great.
Okay.
So for tonight, specifically so that our traffic engineer can get started, what we're asking for approval is the, to approve the scope of services and fee proposal for the borough parking evaluation that's in front of you.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The last item of business on the agenda is under unfinished business, and that's to consider approving Ordinance 5 of 2019, which affirms the Seven Tower Bridge TIF, approving an amended project plan for the TIF, and allocating appropriate tax increments from the positive real property taxes of the district to fund the amended project plan. And I'm going to turn it over to Mike Peters at this time.
Thank you. Council is well aware of the ordinance that's in front of them because this is the third or fourth time that we've talked about it. You previously adopted a resolution, quote unquote, signing on to the TIF plan. As part of signing on to that resolution, you also knew that the town, that the county and the school district also needed to sign on. We received confirmation that both the county and the school district have signed on to the TIF plan. Following that sign-on, as you know, you held a hearing at a public meeting where council for the developer provided a series of financial analyses to indicate to you the financial benefit of the TIF district. I'll remind you, as you already know, that, that the district was already created. What you're doing is updating, updating the materials, given the amount of time that has passed since the district was first created ten years ago. The TIF district would run until 2029. It involves only one property, that's the property known as the Seven Tower Bridge property. The ordinance itself includes a lot of where-ask clauses, so if you skip past all of those, what you're actually doing is, again, creating the, the TIF district, and again, is for the property that I just identified. It will be effective until 2029. You make a series of findings that you're required to find under the TIF District Act. And after that, what you're doing is obliging the borough to allocate ninety percent of the positive real property tax increments back to the property. And again, to remind you, that, that equals, and Dave will correct me if I'm wrong, an annual payment of $125,499. As Dave explained to you during his presentation, the money that can be expected to come into the borough in business privilege taxes, income taxes, and local services taxes are over $600,000. So in terms of whether or not the TIF still makes sense from a financial aspect, it certainly seems that it does. And the last point I would make is that Ms. Checo also has information regarding, as you recall, at the meeting where we held the hearing, there were questions from the public with respect to the UDAG money that, that's still out there, and also questions with respect to future parking agreements with, with the developer, as they're also the owner of other properties within the borough. And Ms. Checo has an update on that. And I think we both thank the developer and their council for the hard work over the last few weeks to get us here.
Are there any questions on the TIF ordinance?
No.
Dave, do you have any to add?
No.
No? Okay. Thanks.
So at this time, if you are inclined to make a motion, you'd be making a motion approving Ordinance 5 of 2019, affirming the Seven Tower Bridge TIF, approving an amended project plan for the TIF, and allocating appropriate tax increments from the positive real property taxes of the district to fund the amended project plan.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Now that the TIF is complete, simultaneously in, in working with the Pulver Corporation on the TIF, we were also working on their request for additional UDAG monies. So just as a quick synopsis, there's $4 million of the UDAG, which was a development loan that was issued to the Pulvers in the past. And in the, in their reality now of being able to actually construct the building, they have asked to recycle that loan. What we have negotiated, and again, thank you very much for getting us to this point, is that the Pulvers will repay the $4 million that they owe to the borough currently. Upon the repayment of that loan, we will reissue a $1 million loan at an interest rate of 3.25% for a term of ten years. What is important to note is that the borough, in exchange for that loan agreement, we will be getting forty-six spaces on the municipal deck at the Two Tower Bridge parking garage, an additional ten spots throughout the remainder of the garage during the business day. And then most importantly, we will be getting access to 221 spaces from the hours of 6:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. during the week, and from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. on the weekends. So a substantial increase in the amount of public parking available to your businesses, your visitors, and your residents. We think that the request, and in terms of going back and forth, and I know it wasn't always fun, but I'm glad that we got here. I think that it is in the best interest of the borough. There is a stipulation that years one through five, the 3.25% interest will actually go back to the Pulver Corporation, and that is to ensure that the capital improvements to the garage that are needed are completed. That way, we are delivering a safe product to our residents, businesses, and visitors. And then for years six through ten, the interest would come back to the borough. There is an operating and maintenance cost, that's $30,000 annually. But again, you'll be getting interest on your loan. And again, the loan will be repaid in ten years. For Seven Tower Bridge in particular, this agreement allows for fifty public parking spaces from 6:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. No, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. I'm sorry, I'm reading different lines. And that's mostly so that our residents and our visitors can have access to the trail. So again, we thank you for working collaboratively with us and getting us to the point where we feel it's mutually beneficial for both entities. And we're very excited for Seven Tower Bridge to take off. So good luck.
And you, you will of course see many agreements from me in the future memorializing all of this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for working with us through it all.
President, there are no other items for, of business on the agenda for this evening.
Okay. Do we have any more public comment?
She remembered.
First of all, I want to, Anna DeSantis, 200 West Dome, I want to apologize for my mistake earlier. I thought that was public comment for anything. I didn't realize it was just for Washi's. So my concern is that every time I'm driving out around the area, people are going through red lights, like there's, it's going out of style. And it's really frightening to see this happening. It's not just Concha Hocken. It's, I'm seeing it everywhere. And, and it's just becoming like it's an acceptable thing, and it's, it's not. We need to stop this before somebody really gets hurt. And I think somebody got T-boned not long ago that I heard of because somebody went through a red light.
Okey.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. So anyway, thanks again. I apologize for my mistake.
That's all right. Thank you for your comment.
Hi, everybody. Joe Farino from Old Elm Street. I had a question, I have two questions. One is about the parking study. Is the parking study for as built today, or will the parking study be for future considerations of all the construction that should be and will be built? We had two new apartments approved, well, one, one big apartment approved just a few days ago through zoning. And with all the hotel and everything else that's going up, will the parking considerations be for the future or as they are right now?
So the parking in the commercial district in particular is going to be as exists today, but Mr. Kivney fortunately is working on the majority of those projects from an engineering perspective. So we've also asked him to take into account his recommendations on future development and how that potentially may affect parking.
Sure, yeah. I mean, because that's, I just wanted to say that's probably a huge thing to consider because it's going to be a lot more cars coming into town. And the second, I didn't want to bring it up during the Washi's, that was their time. But my concern is the ladder truck. And I don't have full, and a full understanding of if that's parked on Fayette Street or if it's not.
So the ladder truck is located at Concha Hocken Fire Company number two. Things were maneuvered in the building to make space for it, so it is indoors and it is housed in a bay at number two. There are currently six individuals that are trained from number two to drive the ladder truck, along with the volunteers that are also serving out of Concha Hocken Fire Company number two, from Washi.
And if, and I'm not sure how they're parked, but is that ever going to be behind something else? Because if it is going to be behind a different truck, I'd ask for some consideration, especially for the grand.
There's no room to put anything front or back.
Front or back? It'll just be in there?
They're just lined up.
Okay. Because clearly with the grand and everything going on down there, we need that truck, just in case.
No, and I appreciate you saying that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Ms. Joy.
Hi, Ms. Anita. My name's Joy Manis. I live at 222 West Sixth Avenue in Concha Hocken. And I'm here fifteen years now. And everyone's talking about the stop signs and no stop signs. I think we have to have red lights everywhere, stop signs everywhere, because people just, Forest and Sixth, they just run through that stop sign. I'm in the middle of the street. There has to be something done. There has to be cameras that are going to get people's license plates, something. There's only one way to find it, and if, and if our Concha Hocken police are busy doing other things, they can't be doing that. So I would like to suggest that we have cameras put in that catch these people that are running the stop signs and start finding them. And then maybe they'll stop. That's my suggestion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You can come up. Good evening. Thank you for your email.
Sure. My name's Ed Zia. I live over at the grand. Question regarding the parking, the fifty-five spots or forty-five spots, some of them are going to be at Tower Bridge seven, and some, I thought you said, at two.
No, it's two separate.
Tower Bridge. So the, I'll clarify, just in case I wasn't. So there's, for Two Tower Bridge in particular, there's forty-six parking spaces on the top deck, and then there'll be ten additional throughout the garage during the day. And then the entire garage will open up from 6:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m.
And there will not be fees charged?
There's fees charged now, though it's metered.
So there are metered spots?
Correct.
Okay. Because right now, at AmerisourceBergen, you have, there are seven signs with Sora's name on them, this big. Seven. AmerisourceBergen has eleven of those signs on Elm Street and on Fayette Street. Keystone Property has five. And then Sora has a sign at Fayette and First Avenue about parking, and it's this big. The lettering is this big. So Stephanie, you can walk down there and see it. It's this big, and it says, "You can park at our parking lot from 6:00 to 2:00 at no cost." The lettering is this big. The Sora signs everywhere are this big. Who can see that? So hopefully, when their parking is available, it's prominent, and people know that there's parking available. Because Sora...
We'll be shouting it from the rooftops.
Yeah. Well, Sora then, it's this big, and their signs are that big.
We've mentioned it here a couple of times during council.
You know, that they can get away with that. You know, it's not right that they, I mean, they offered it, and that's a big thing.
We can nicely suggest.
Nobody knows about it. So hopefully, you know, when they have their building constructed and people get a chance to know about it, it's done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Mayor Aronson?
Got two things. The Concha Hocken Community Garden is a finalist in the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society's 2019 gardening contest. Judging will be this Sunday, the 21st. They're working really hard, even through the rain, to get ready for it. And I know all of us wish them good luck, and it will certainly keep us all posted on how they do. If any residents watching want to check out the Community Garden, it's on the 400 block of East Elm Streets. And the second thing is, backed by popular demand, is a shredding event with the Concha Hocken Police Department that is going to be on Saturday, September 14th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's being hosted by Caldwell Banker Preferred. They're at 1207 Fayette. So it's open to everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Stoker?
Yes, I have one thing for the chief. Chief, I had a couple of residents ask me to talk to the police about Suck Cliff Park. The regular season is done, but we have a lot of tournaments in town the next month or two, and our, the visitors coming into town with their teams don't know the traffic patterns down there. So if you can have a patrol go through there, a couple... So, if you can have a patrol go through there a couple of times a night, because they're parking all over the place, and they're parking different ways, they're going up the one way. So, if you could look into that, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a report from the sewer authority. West Conshohocken capacity confirmation letters have been sent out to all the property owners in West Conshohocken confirming the sewer capacity assigned to their properties and inviting questions or additional conversation in the event that a property owner believes the authority has incomplete or inaccurate information. Also, we're still working on our inflow and our infiltration that's into the sewer main flows, and they're keeping track of all that. Their liner project number two is getting ready to be completed, but they need property records from property owners in order to acquire the easements in order to do their job. They're also looking into buying a jet truck. That's a truck that cleans out the inside of the different barrels where the water is filtered, and ours is not doing well. So, they're going to repair the jet truck that they have right now, and then they're going to purchase a new one at the end of the year and then sell the old one. And that's about all I have.
Thank you, Anita.
You're welcome.
Tina?
Just for the CRC, I wanted to let everybody know that this summer, they had 30 residents take advantage of the Learn to Row program. So, I'm really excited to say that that's really starting to catch on, and it's great that our residents are able to use the water and actually learn competitive rowing. So, that's exciting. The other thing I just want to make sure of is that the residents are aware that the next few days are going to be drastic heat warning. If anyone is in need of any help, please reach out to all your council people, and we can work with you to make sure that you have what you need to get through this heat flash that's coming.
And I believe the safe shelter is the community center?
Yes.
So, if anyone needs safe shelter with air conditioning, it's the community center.
I just want to remind everyone about our summer concert series tomorrow night at Sutcliffe Park, weather permitting, at 7 o'clock. It'll be classic rock and roll. And then, next Thursday night at 7 also, it would be the hits of the 60s, 70s, and 80s. So, bring your blankets and your chairs and enjoy a nice night with your neighbors.
Yeah, I got one thing. For the code department, I've been walking around country now on payments, and they look like lawns. Nobody's getting out and pulling the grass up on their payments. They know that's a hazard too. Somebody could trip or wear that and everything. So, I'd like the code department start knocking on doors, give them a ticket, tell them to get that grass off the payments. That's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't have anything for the evening. Thank you.
Chief Motts?
Just to add, with the heat advisory effect, people over 75 are the most vulnerable to heat.
Thank you.
In about 10 years, that'll be it. I mean, if you know somebody that needs a well-being check or anything, you know, you can call us directly, and we'll be more glad to help, and even install air conditioner or whatever. So, put the word out there that you can call us directly. I've already put a mail out about it, and we'll be glad to help.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Meeting adjourned.
Kevin.
Who's that, Kevin? What you got, Kev?
Go ahead.
Any of you guys, can you get our official or somebody to cut on 8, between 8th and 7th of Wall Street rather? There is a branch, branches hanging down. If anybody could cut their eye, cut their head. I noticed I walked away and my head hit it. Branches alright, but... Find down there to cut these trees and prune these things or whatever.
I'm sure we can let the homeowner now, property owners know.
If I have to, if a company or guy just want to cut them, I'll know.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.